I'd like to call the, uh, you ready, Ben? You're good? All right. Let's call the Township of Lopaccon meeting the order for February 1st, 2023. I would ask that everyone please bow their heads for a moment of silence. Pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the people of this nation, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every single one and every single justice.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided indicating the time and place of the meeting in accordance with Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 by advertising a notice in the Star Ledger and the Express Times of Warren County Zone and by posting a copy on the bulletin board in the initial building. Roll call, please.
Yes, Councilor Del Harrow, Councilman Clay.
Here.
Councilman Toledo.
Here.
Council President Wright.
Here.
Mayor.
Here. Need a motion to come out of executive session?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Mr. Lavery?
Yes, Mayor, we emerged from executive session at 7:30 PM where we discussed five matters. One was personnel matter dealing with the police department. Second was a personnel matter dealing with job applicants. Third was a contractual matter dealing with public relations consultant. Fourth was an attorney-client privilege matter dealing with blighted properties. And fifth was an attorney-client privilege matter dealing with rent control. No official action was taken. Copy of these minutes will be available at such time as the council determines there is no harm to the public interest. Oh, just, um, tonight on the agenda, we have a presentation by the Cubes at US-22 Sub-1 LLC. So just so everybody is aware in the audience, this is not a public hearing. This is just the applicant's presentation of a concept plan. And the township council just makes a determination whether it is generally consistent with the redevelopment plan. If the council makes that determination, then they have the ability to go to the land use board where it's treated like a earth planning board, where it's treated like a regular land use application. But this is a prerequisite to going before the board, otherwise they would be deemed incomplete because it's part of the redevelopment agreement, so.
Will we ask questions about this presentation?
Well, you can, you can make comments at public, but it's not a public hearing, so.
The answer is no.
Well, yeah, because you can ask those questions at the planning.
This is not an agenda where we can ask questions.
Well, you can add, you can, you can make a statement under public comment, but this is not a public. I don't know how to tell you, sir, any different way. I just told you, it's not a, if you can, you can yell all you want, sir. You can yell all you want. This is a concept, this is the what they were required to do under the law. So if you want to make statements at the public comment portion, you may do so. And that's the fifth time I've told you, and it's the last time I'm going to tell you.
Will we be able to question them?
No, you can question them at the planning board. They are not being questioned this evening. That is the procedure. That's not my rule. That is the procedure.
Thank you for being so polite and explaining what's going on.
Yes, and thank you for being so kind.
Well, I don't know what's going on.
Sir, sir, enough!
Well, sir, we're going to hear about it when they present their concept plan.
All right. Let's skip right to the presentation, please, gentlemen. You have the floor.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Christopher Costa from the law firm of Stevens and Lee. I represent the applicant, the Cubes at US-22 Sub-1 LLC. The property in question is Block 102, lots 9.01 and 9.03. This property is a portion of the tract that's commonly known as the Phillipsburg Mall. As most of you are aware, if not all, I'm sure, this property straddles, or the mall straddles both Lopaccon and Pohaccon. Both townships have designated the Phillipsburg Mall property and the property directly behind the mall, which is Lot 9 in Lopaccon, as areas in need of redevelopment, and both have designated warehouses as a use permitted in their respective redevelopment zones. Both towns have provided similar bulk standards and similar buffer and setback standards so that the development of warehouse on both sides of the town borders is consistent. However, each town has a slightly different procedure for proceeding. In Lopaccon, the redevelopment plan sets forth in Section 3.4.7 that the layout of all structures in the redevelopment area shall be, shall be subject to a concept plan approval by the township council. We are here this evening seeking that approval of my client's layout from the township council. Prior to this meeting, we have submitted detailed concept plans to the township. We have amended those plans upon comments from township professionals, and we have reviewed the written responses to the plans from Mr. Sturbens, the township engineer, and Mr. Ritter, the township planner. We will be reviewing the important details of my client's project this evening, and will also respond to the items raised by Mr. Sturbens and Mr. Ritter. The, just briefly, the redevelopment plan provides for warehouse overlay zone in redevelopment Area B, where the mall is located. Specifically, the plan allows for warehouse facilities either as an independent operation or as an accessory to a permitted use. The plan goes on to provide site requirements for the permitted warehouse use. We have a number of witnesses this evening who will be providing testimony describing the proposed warehouse facility that my client proposes, and describing how the facility complies with the redevelopment plan and the few areas where we are seeking waivers. Before I introduce the witnesses, I just want to touch on one other detail of this project. As we know, this project is in two townships. It's also relevant to note that the redevelopment zone, redevelopment Area B, includes the Phillipsburg Mall property and also includes a property behind the Phillipsburg Mall. In a perfect world, both those properties would be proceeding at exactly the same time. In this case, the property behind the Phillipsburg Mall is not ready to proceed. So a lot of our information that we're presenting tonight addresses making sure the properties work together, but at this point, we're only dealing with the Phillipsburg Mall property. So you'll be hearing testimony tonight, or statements from our witnesses, that, you know, the circulation easements and the site will ensure services for both the front property and the rear property. Likewise, we'll be talking about how the circulation will work with the restaurants in front of the property and the coals, which will be staying on the property. Our first, I'm just going to list the witnesses, and then we'll, we'll bring them up, and I've talked to Mr. Lavery that we're not going to do an official swear-in of, of the witnesses. James Thaon is our professional engineer from Bowler Engineering. He's going to be going over the site conditions. John Harder is our professional engineer and traffic consultant from Atlantic Traffic Design. He'll be talking about entrance and exit onto the site from Route 22. And our planner is Brian Seidel. He, we're not going to affirmably have him testify, but if, if there are questions involving planning, he's available to speak to the council. Our fiscal expert, Richard Redding, is also available, again, if the council has questions. And finally, I have client representatives from CRG Acquisitions, which is one of the partners that owns the Cubes at US-22, Frank Pacunas and Fred Ferraro from that company, if there are questions about the operation. And finally, I'm accompanied by my co-council, John Lloyd, who addresses specifically finance agreements and redevelopment agreements. With that said, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Thaon for our site testimony.
Could you spell your last name, please?
Sure, it's T-H-A-O-N.
Thank you.
Would it be okay with counsel if I stand over there?
Absolutely.
If you could see in front of me? Okay. All right, so we're not marking exhibits tonight, correct? Yeah. So the first exhibit that we prepared tonight is an aerial exhibit prepared by Bowler. It's dated, today's date, February 2nd, 2023. For the benefit of the board and the public, north is on the left-hand side of the page tonight. So what we're here to discuss is shown in the center of the page. It's, it's a Phillipsburg Mall site. Running up and down through the site, you'll see a pink line that delineates the location of the Pohaccon and Lopaccon Township boundary line. So on the north side of the site, or left-hand side of the page, is Lopaccon. On the right-hand side, or southern side of the site, is Pohaccon. So lots that we're here to discuss tonight are specifically Block 102, Lot 9.03, and 9.01 within Lopaccon Township. And then on the other side of the page, just for the benefit of the board, that's Block 1, Lot 1.01 within Pohaccon Township. The entirety of a site that we're discussing within both towns is 72.189 acres, and the site, the size of the site specifically in Lopaccon is 34.963 acres. So just to acclimate everyone to exactly what's surrounding the site as pertinent to the application tonight, on the eastern side is Route 22, which is a state highway under DOT jurisdiction. To the north of the site is a residential development known as Sycamore Landing. Talk about that in a little bit more detail. To the west of us is where Mr. Costa referenced, there may be a future application that's currently a farm field. And then to the south of the site is an existing residential development. So now what we want to do is just focus on the development itself and how do you access the existing conditions and what's changing versus what's staying. So to do that, like to start on Route 22. And on the northernmost side of the site, to get into the site, you have a right-in, right-out driveway where I'm pointing to. And the center of the site is a signalized intersection that allows for a left-hand movement into the site from Route 22 and out of the site onto 22 to go westbound. And then further south is another right-in, right-out driveway. And what you'll see as part of this application is that those driveways are not changing in their configuration or in their geometry. Then what I'll refer to is the outer loop road. You'll hear that a lot tonight to differentiate the site. Along the outer loop road to the north, there is a vacant former Friendly's restaurant that is going to be removed as part of this application, including all of the improvements associated with it. South of that is an existing Taco Bell that's going to remain. South of that is an existing Starbucks, which will also remain. South of that is a Chick-fil-A, and south of that is a Panera, also which are going to remain as part of this application. What is important to the applicant, as well as very clearly to the town, is to ensure that proper circulation and access to those existing restaurants remains as part of this. And we'll talk about that as it relates to the outer loop road. In the center of the site, which really the star of the show, shown in red, is the existing mall itself. And as part of the mall on the southern side, there's an existing Coles. That Coles building is going to remain, as well as much of the parking field associated with it. But in red shows and delineates the entirety of the mall itself that's going to be demolished as part of this project should it be approved. And you'll see that there are actually portions shown in a lighter color that have already been demolished at this time. So that outer loop road that I discussed, which is between the existing parking field and the restaurants, really is going to remain intact as far as its location as part of this project. And that's because it really does provide great circulation and accessibility to those restaurant uses. It also, along its northern boundary, provides access via residential, via an easement to the residential property that's to the north. So that outer loop road that we're calling it is going to remain in those locations. On the southern side of the site, there's also an outer loop road. I'll kind of delineate with my finger where that goes. It essentially meanders around the entire property. And so we'll discuss a little bit how that's going to tweak to keep the circulation as is. And then lastly, in the existing conditions, along the western boundary, you'll see in this blue color on both the north and south side of the site, there's existing detention basins. And you can see by the aerial exhibit that we have here, those existing detention basins really aren't maintained, they're, they're very much overgrown. So it's something we're looking to mitigate as part of the proposed project. Last but not least, what's important to note is the location of parking spaces specifically in Lopaccon Township, something we wanted to be sensitive to, and clearly, the board professionals, the redevelopment plan is sensitive to, is the location of parking spaces and any improvements as it relates to that residential boundary along the north there. So currently, parking is about 85 feet from that property line in the existing conditions. As well, on the site as a whole, there's 2,919 parking spaces today in the existing conditions, so we'll discuss what's changing. So with that said, I want to jump over to, what is the star of the show, which is the colorized version of the overall site layout plan and circulation plan that was submitted as part of the general development plan set that was submitted to this board for review? And what we did was, we included an aerial exhibit in the background, we superimposed landscaping on top of that, we added some additional coloring to delineate where certain circulation is intended to happen or not on the site. And so I'll discuss that now. So again, north is on the left-hand side of the page here. So what we're looking at in the center of the page is an 848,378 square foot building. That building straddles the municipal boundary lines. So the northern side of the site is Lopaccon with 456,528 square feet. On the southern side of the boundary line is 391,850 square feet. So just again, to reaffirm what's staying and what's going, on the north, that former Friendly's and all the improvements associated with it are going to be demolished as part of this project. So you're seeing, that will be a green space from here on out. South of that, and along the Route 22 frontage, you'll see that the remaining restaurants that we discussed, Taco Bell, the Chick-fil-A, the Panera, the Starbucks, those are all remaining as is. And lastly, the Coles, which is on the south side in Pohaccon Township, is also going to remain, as well as the associated parking field. So all in all, this site is reducing impervious coverage such that an additional 2.62 acres of green space is going to be added to the site when it's all said and done. And in Lopaccon specifically, we're reducing impervious coverage from 63.16% to 61.43%. So there's a nice reduction there in town. So then what I want to do is just take you on a tour of the site. And first, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it, but just, it's worth mentioning that we worked with your board professionals and made some comments with respect to pedestrian connectivity on the site. And we have enhanced pedestrian connectivity throughout the site, giving access from Sycamore's Landing, sidewalks, to the restaurants along the frontage, from the warehouse use itself to the restaurants along the frontage into the Coles and vice versa. So there's really a lot of circulation for pedestrians that's been enhanced, and that didn't exist in the existing conditions with the mall today. But really, to talk about vehicular circulation, what I want to do is just acclimate the board to some of the colors that you're seeing. Hopefully, it's, it may be hard to see from that distance, but the reality is, we show a red color where there's a potential for what we'll call cross-pollination between the warehouse use and the retail and restaurant uses. Green is where essentially we're expecting that there wouldn't be cross-pollination between the two uses. And lastly, what we show in yellow, which is a little bit harder to see admittedly, is where we expect warehouse use only. So really, the premise and design of the site is such that we try to minimize wherever possible, multiple uses on site from having to cross-populate with one another. And I think we've really effectively done that, especially in conjunction with professionals and comments as this plan has evolved over time. And so essentially, what would happen is, you'll hear from a traffic expert, but the majority of trips we're expecting would be from Route 78, which is page right, if you will, or south of the site from here, via a left-in movement off of 22. And if a tractor-trailer wanted to get to the warehouse, they'd have the ability to make the left into the site and can drive straight through a signalized intersection into what we're calling the inner loop road, okay? That inner loop road that allows full circulation around this cross-dock facility. If in the future another development were to come online west of here, we provided access points to the development that is separate from the outer loop road. So there's an outer loop road, as you can see, that much of it stayed as was in the existing conditions. Specifically, what we wanted to be sensitive to was the residential development along the northern property line here. We did not move the outer loop road from where it currently exists today. That means that that nice mature buffer that existed along that property line is staying intact as part of this design. Also important to note is there's actually a natural 20 to 25-foot gray change between the warehouse site, which is higher than the residential site in that location. So it was important to us to maintain that access point and actually, again, even where it didn't happen today, where I'm pointing to here, separate warehouse-related traffic from residential traffic. Then along the frontage, if a retail customer or a restaurant customer wanted to enter into the site, they have the ability to make a left into the site on that outer loop road and access the restaurants as they did today. We're making some striping modifications, but essentially, the geometry location of curb lines, that's all the same. The vast majority of trucks we expect are going to exit to go back towards 78. And so with that, our expectation is that along this southern outer loop road, trucks would have the ability to make a right out and go back down towards Route 78. What we did, though, because there is the Coles there, we want to be sensitive to Coles and to their customers, is we minimized the points of access that there are in the existing conditions to that outer loop road to minimize conflict points. So what we did was, we essentially channelized them along that outer loop road and gave them one location to exit, but we did maintain all the current access points along what we believe is their primary point of access to their parking field. With that, to discuss parking and loading, so the site as a whole has 351 parking spaces. And the parking fields, which is customary with a cross-dock facility, are located on the north and southern sides of the building. Specifically, in Lopaccon, there's 106 parking spaces that are proposed on the northern side of the site. There's 160 total loading docks proposed on either side of the building, and there's a total of 195 trailer parking spaces also proposed. Key component of the design of the site is buffering. So with that, I want to just describe to you, we've talked a little bit about what the building is, where you park, where the loading is, how you circulate. Let's talk about how we're buffering all that from the surrounding uses, because that was an important facet of the design and important in the redevelopment plan. So what we've done was, along the frontage of the site, between the outer loop road and the inner loop road, is provided a double-staggered row of evergreens that at the time of planting will be eight to 10 feet high. In addition to that, we've proposed birmingham in that location. On top of all that, we've then proposed a solid fence, which the idea being, we worked this out with your professionals, was when you drive into the site, we want to minimize the ability for you to see tractor-trailers if they're going to be parked in those trailer spaces. And so we looked at the height of the tractor-trailer relative to the grades around it, relative to the birmingham, the heights of landscaping, and we feel that we've actively been able to buffer the trailer parking along that entire frontage. Also was important was now, if trucks were, or vehicles were to be able to drive, you know, northbound towards the residential development, we want to minimize the ability for their lights to essentially kind of go into the distance, right? And to sprawl out over that use. So what we've done, even though that, that actually happens in the existing conditions, we think we're making it better in the fact that along this bend here, where that would have the propensity to happen, we have berms, eight-to-10-foot-high plantings, double-staggered row of them, and a solid fence. We looked at the grades.
The, the plantings are eight to 10 feet. How high is the actual berm that the plantings would be going into?
It varies. At some points, it's about six to seven feet high, some points a little bit less. But what we did was, we looked at the grades throughout, and we looked at where it is a typical tractor-trailer's lights sit, and then we've done birmingham on top of that. So then along this, this buffer on this side here, again, we've kept the mature buffer, we've kept the outer loop road where it is. So residents are used to having that boundary. But then beyond that is a further significantly wider landscaped area, which is where the birmingham happens, and additional evergreens and fencing. And then even past that, we did another round of buffering past the initial buffering that we provided between the outer loop road and the inner loop road. So significant buffer's been added in there compared to what exists today. And I think what's important to note about this is that in these, in the existing conditions, there is approximately 310 parking spaces that are along that frontage. But when we're, when we're done, should it get approved, there are going to be about 79. So we're really reducing that as well as adding a significant amount of birmingham and landscaping. What's also important to note is what we're doing from a stormwater management perspective. So on the west hand, west-hand side of the site, there was those two existing basins. But as I said, they really weren't functioning well. The site is a major development pursuant to DEP criteria. However, because we're reducing impervious coverage so much, we naturally meet the regulations, and therefore, we reduce the rate of runoff and the volume of runoff on this site. But the applicant actually decided to go further than what the rules require, and we've actually decided to meet the green infrastructure regulations that New Jersey promulgated in 2021. So this site does not trigger what's called their water quality requirements, which require 80% TSS removal rating. However, as part of this design, we're proposing a wet pond along the western property line, which does provide 80% TSS, which is not required as part of the design, and we are mitigating, again, reducing runoff beyond what is required by code on this site. With that, though, we are mimicking the location of the basin, although making it longer to accommodate those added benefits. And the, the location of that basin is within 50 feet of the property line, which would require a variance with the planning board should we get to that step. It's worth mentioning, all utilities are available for the site, and should there become another site west of us on, on board for future development, we're able to adequately provide them with the utilities that they need, and that would be water, sewer, electric gas, telecommunications, as well as access easements and construction-related easements to accommodate that use should it come online. So if this were, again, to get to the next step and go in front of the planning board, we would be seeking relief for a setback from the side yard. The code requires a 275-foot setback for the building, whereas we're proposing 242 feet. The existing building, when the warehouse was, sorry, when the mall was constructed, was about 238 feet. So we're still beyond that, but the benefit of this application, there's significantly more buffering than existed before, and there's a reduction in vehicles that existed before in that location. In addition to that, I did mention that we would be seeking relief for the location of that stormwater basin. We'd also be seeking relief for the depth of the buffer along the outer loop road and inner loop road, specifically, where my finger is here, it's about 85 or so feet in that location, where we're not exactly 50 feet in depth, we're about 39. However, in that location, again, we're not, we're not really losing the, I think, the intention of the code, which is to try to buffer that industrial warehouse use in the trailer parking spaces.
What is the average side yard setback to the northerly face of the building? I know you just mentioned to the one corner, it's 242, but I believe the other corner is much further away from the property line.
Yeah, that's, that's a great point. So there's only about 4,900 feet of the building, or about, only about 260 feet of the 580-foot depth of building that doesn't comply with that. And so the vast majority of the building is more than 275 feet away from that side property line.
So do you have an average setback on?
I don't have the exact average.
I'm just curious if the average is more than 275?
The average is more than 275. Say that confidently, I can get the exact map for you. Sit down.
Thank you.
But that was my direct testimony. I did just want to, for what it's worth, bring up the elevations as part of the general development plan requirements. I'll hold it to the left here. So this would be, this is inconvenient. First, I'll show you. This is looking from this view over here, which is looking at the northwest, sorry, southeastern corner of the building. And so this just gives you an idea of what the building could look like and architectural features that would be proposed on it, that was submitted as part of the application.
Question?
Sure.
This area here, where the trucks are coming in?
Yes.
Okay. And this area here is basically for exiting of the Paneras and whatnot that's in there now?
Correct.
So the, this road here would intersect with the truck road at some point?
Correct.
Okay. And when trucks actually cross, they're coming directly in here?
Correct.
And they also have another, so they could go out this way?
Right, so if a truck needed to make a left back onto Route 22, they would use slip lane? John? Sounds good. Slip ramp, essentially what it is, to make the left back onto 22.
So any cars coming in off of 22 would essentially be interacting at some point, coming in this way or going out this way? Then I guess if, just to clarify for everybody, if a truck was coming, they would use the, I guess, northernmost driveway? They would come in and there's an opening between the outer and inner loop roads to get that type of truck movement into, into the inner loop road?
We actually wanted to discourage the use of the northernmost driveway, just in case, we're really envisioning that maybe for the passenger vehicles that would get to Sycamore's Landing. So the site would be signed such that a tractor-trailer would be told to use the southernmost right-in, right-out access point, and then encouraged to then circulate around the back of the site to get in. And that keeps them away, essentially, if they, if we can, from having to even drive down this aisle.
I guess, I guess that northerly connection between inner and outer loop roads still has a purpose. I guess if a truck were to drive northbound on the outer loop road and not get into the inner loop road where it should be, that would be, I guess, a last resort, I guess, if they could do that.
Correct.
Something we talked about with you guys.
Yes, exactly. So if there was an errant truck, in other words, this site will have, what you're finding signage to guide trucks where to go and where not to go. On Route 22, ideally, we'd want them to be in the left-hand lane when they come into the site. And then when they enter the site, ideally, we want them to be closer to the Starbucks so they can use a through movement into the inner loop road. However, if they made a mistake, we wouldn't want them to weave, right? Because that could then cause some slowdowns and backups of things. So what we did was, if they were to make a mistake, they could go page right or northbound, and then we provided another access point into the industrial loop road. We expect that to be infrequent, especially as drivers learn the site, but we wanted to provide that movement.
James, is there anything that we need to address in the call?
Before, one thing you ought to just mention, in some of the zoning tables that were put on the drawings, it indicated a building height of 60 feet. I understand, though, from looking at your architecture, you don't intend to go that high. I just think it would help if you'd just explain what the height of the building is.
Sure. So the height that we're proposing is 55 feet, and that's based on the average grade and complies with code.
Much more to make sure we address everything in the letters. I know you addressed the waivers that we're seeking. There's also a question about the slopes of the dams and impagments, and I think we'll address that with the business plans and show compliance.
Correct. There are some areas where we're over three-to-one slopes. That was a good catch by Mr. Ritter. In this location, along the southern boundary, or, sorry, the western boundary, that's because we're tying into the existing slopes of the site to the west of us.
And the aisle widths?
Yes. The aisle widths on the north, well, really, what's pertinent is the north side of the building is 24 feet, whereas 30 feet is required in that location. So we would be seeking relief from that with the planning board.
And then the open space within the parking fields?
Our intention is to comply, so we'll work with Mr. Ritter on those calculations.
And then we were asked by Mr. Ritter to create a unified vehicle circulation plan, which I believe we've done and have submitted, we've communicated with the property owner to the rear of this property, submitted a proposed easement document, so we're working that through. So I think that's going to work out successfully. And the question about office use, I think the offices would be an accessory to the warehouse operation. It wasn't even a separate office that was planned.
Exactly. They'll be within the footprint of the building. Yeah. My question dealt with the fact, by trainway, was, I believe, it was on your ability to serve letter. They made an assumption that you were going to do 45,000 square feet of office, and what I was interested in is, first, I thought that might be a little high, but if it was going to be, then I wondered, was that?
It could very well be high. And I think that was just based on designing the worst-case scenario. I mean, more appropriately or more probable, 20,000 square feet for a building in this size?
And most of the time, the offices will be just randomly on the floor, as needed.
Well, we usually put it all in one area. We usually put them at the corners, two corners and maybe one midpoint on one of the long sides of the building that serves as a driver check-in, you know, warehouse worker or lunch-in area.
That's fine. I think it's something that can be addressed at the planning board and simply shown in the plan.
And I think as far as Paul's letter, we've got some questions that our traffic engineer is going to address, and I think we've addressed the other points that were raised in the letter.
So you'll revise the plan, I think there's like seven of the comments require some minor changes to the plan, and you'll make them?
Yes.
Thank you.
So with that, we'll introduce John Harter.
All right. Good evening. H-A-R-T-E-R. Good evening. John Harter from Atlantic Traffic and Design Engineering Principal. I actually presented with the team the last time we were before you in October of 2020. To start out, we had presented that night the letter of no interest we received from DOT. So the DOT traffic numbers, trip generation is utilized for permitting of sites. So when you have a situation like this, whether, if you were changing the access, we would need a new permit, but as you heard this evening, we're not. We're intending to maintain the access through access points along Route 22. So when you're either getting a new access permit or you're looking to get a letter of no interest, as we have done, the DOT considers former building areas as part of the trip generation calculations. That's something they've always done. And so the theory behind that is that the traffic that the site was originally designed for, the access points, if they were greater in the past, as in the case here, the Route 22 site access and frontage was properly designed, and that's how DOT has approached this project. We had received that letter of no interest for what James just presented, the warehouse and the out parcels remaining. Actually, we had the friendlies in there. We didn't, at that time, we didn't know the friendlies was being removed. And since that, we've been working with DOT on the signal design for the onsite loop road, which I'll talk about. But what we submitted to the township was our latest comprehensive submission to DOT, which is on December 5 of just last year. And what we have done is submitted an updated letter of no interest, and that was done to include the future development that's on lot, that should be coming on Lot 9, as we understood the township was looking for us to integrate our access, as James described, with both developments, if they go forward, to share the Route 22 access. So we've had a virtual meeting with DOT, and that they agreed with the trip generation numbers, and that we anticipate they will be issuing an updated letter of no interest, basically, for both projects. There were other facets of the, that they asked for, I'll talk about, there are two more issues that related to DOT. But just to give the board an understanding of those updated numbers with both developments, when you consider the former Phillipsburg Mall, we're also considering Sycamore Landing, so their left turns would be entering and exiting through our signalized access, as their driveway only served rights. We also consider the coals staying in place, as well as the out parcels. And just to give the board an understanding of the trip generation and a sense of it, the majority of traffic is already being generated. So if we look at the future case, and then we take the coals and the out parcels that are there, they're really generating the majority of traffic, even in the future case. So in the morning, 56% of the traffic is related to those uses that are there and staying, 65% in the evening peak hour, and then Saturday, they're actually generating about 90% of what would be generated, what we project to be generated. So DOT, we fully expect that they'll be issuing the letter of no interest. And the reason is that because if you look back at the mall and how it was designed for so much traffic, the evening peak hour, if we compare our build-out with the former mall, and I'm including the lot adjacent to us, the reduction in the evening peak hour is almost 900 peak hour trips, and the Saturday peak hour is almost 1,700 trips. So the access and Route 22 in this section were really designed for a lot more volume than what we're seeing. The concern with DOT is trucks and, as well as the township, and as you've heard, we've made a great effort to design a plan with the separate loop roads and been thoughtful about the access, and trying to segregate the trucks and passenger car traffic as much as we can. And as James described, the trucks the lefts in, coming from 78 predominantly, would be making a movement directly into the inner loop road as a straight movement, whereas today, as you come in, you have to make a right or a left. So that's very efficient. And then the outbound movement for a left-out for the truck, we have the slip lane that James described. So really keeping the trucks making the lefts in a very limited area of the site. And then the rights, as James described, we're intending them to come right in, right out on the southern access point, and they would be kept to the perimeter of the site, away from the out parcels and the retail on the site, and especially away from the residential. So that the plan has been, we've looked at many different options on how to, you know, to best serve the traffic, and I think this is a very good plan. The removal of the friendlies, this is a more recent development, and that's really great as well, because that was kind of situated in a location where we're proposing this connection between the two loop roads that was briefly talked about. And that, it's helpful not to have an outside out parcel in that area, so that's another benefit. The two other aspects that DOT was, you know, asking us to look into, we have been redesigning the onsite signals that control the loop road, or now really the two loop roads, in a sense. And we are continuing the same phasing and the coordination with the signal out at Route 22, and we are redoing the signal completely. So it's all new equipment for the onsite signal, modern, with proper pedestrian connections, et cetera, that a current DOT design would require. And that will be, we'll have communication between our signal onsite and Route 22, which is going to be a great option, you know, operation. And that's what DOT was concerned about, the operation of the signal. They're reviewing that now, and we hope to get their review back shortly. And one aspect is really the, as the double-left movement comes into the site, we want to make sure it's a free flow and is not backed up by any traffic on the, in the loop road itself. And one feature that's being proposed in DOT, we've talked about this, is the double-left out of the site to go north on 22, we will be installing an actuation device that will, it's referred to as a force-off loop, and we want to ensure that when the double-left phase goes and gets the green, that it clears out, and it wouldn't block any traffic making a left-in and continuing this way, which is really not much traffic. Most of it, we expect, will go straight through or make a left to go to the out parcels. So that's another, you know, upgrade that we're proposing, in addition to a completely new signalized, a signal system that DOT was looking for. Let's see, what else were they, the other aspect for DOT was the analysis that we prepared and submitted to them for the three access points. And the operations, we found good operations for the peak hours. We're fortunate that the double-left on Route 22 that served the mall has two lanes, and they're each approximately 640 feet. So they're very, you know, have a lot of storage for vehicles. That would accommodate approximately 25 passenger cars in each lane and eight tractor-trailers in each lane. So much more than we anticipate in the full build-out, even with both developments that I've talked about this evening. Another point just about the area and improvements along Route 22, it's clear that there's much recent warehouse development in the area, and DOT informed us on our last virtual meeting. Township may be aware, but they are bidding later this year, plans to upgrade the Route 22 signalized intersection at our entrance. And then also just to the south, the County Route 519, they're also proposing to redo that signal. And they had mentioned to us geometric issues there with tractor-trailers that they're looking to fix under that project as well. So it sounds, there's no guarantee on timing with DOT, but it sounds like that, you know, with our project, our construction time, that it'll take to get our project approved and ultimately built would, it sounds like it would likely coincide with those improvements by DOT, so that's a positive.
So we're talking strictly signaling now, we're not talking about any roadwork or anything?
No. Alton, who is the traffic engineer for NJDOT in this region, did say that he would be, you know, remedying the geometric issue, which I, to be honest, I don't fully understand what that is, but he's mentioned it previously when we've talked about this.
And you do your traffic study and trips and all that other stuff. Are you talking about the Phillipsburg Mall 20 years ago, or are you talking about within the last 10?
It would be the full build-out. So what was there historically, that's how DOT would look at it in terms of trip comparison.
You're talking cars versus trucks?
Correct. So in the analysis that we've done, there's a lot less traffic, but the truck percentages are much higher. So the analysis takes into account that a truck is equivalent to multiple cars in terms of capacity.
Correct.
And just in terms of trucks, you know, we, the analysis, we also look at queuing in the model, and that Route 22 left, double-left in is, you know, plenty of storage, based on the analysis, as I described earlier.
How much green time is going to be provided for the movement crossing the outer loop road to get to the inner loop road, if you know at this point?
Oh, I could try to look that up for you, Paul. So we're not making any really significant changes to the operation, the phasing staying as it is. So you're really referring to the double-left turn movement that would then have a green as you proceed?
There's going to be a truck coming in, and I just want to know how much green time is going to be provided for that truck to be able to cross the outer loop road into the inner loop road?
So that, Paul, the cycle length in the morning and the evening, which is critical for the development, is 120-second cycle, seconds per cycle. So that's, throughout a peak hour, there'll be 30 cycles.
So we're assuming that two, it's a double-left turn out, if my memory serves me correctly, going into that site?
That's right.
Once, so you're saying the two tractor-trailers side by side could make a left-hand turn?
No.
Wouldn't it have an inner loop road side by side?
No, it would accommodate a left of an inner truck?
Right.
And then a passenger car adjacent. And it would be signed that way to, now, James did say if there was ever an errant truck in that right of the two left turn lanes, it would be able to get into the inner loop road. We've allowed for that, but they were anticipating that would be very infrequent, so. Sorry, I didn't expect that kind of question, sorry. Here we go. Okay. Okay, there it is. So that would be, that would be up to 24 seconds of green time in the timing directive for the double-left movement coming in and then clearing through the interior. It would receive a green light as it comes into the loop, the loop road at that light onsite during the morning and evening peak hours.
Yeah, I understand it. Going back to Route 22, you're going to have double-left, so the vehicles will start turning, you only have 24 seconds to, I guess, make the left into the, into this section of roadway between Route 22 and the outer loop?
Correct. So the 24 seconds for the lead green arrow.
So when they approach the outer loop road, is that going to be green so they can continue?
Certainly, yes. That coordination will remain.
So how long is that going to, that's my question, is how?
Oh, you would have, you would have the equivalent amount of time, at least.
So what is that, though?
It would be 24 seconds as well, at least, to continue that movement. So the intent is to clear that all the way through, so.
Or when you get to the planning board, will you be providing some simulations to the board just to show? the board just to show how that movement's going to, is, is going to happen? I guess the biggest, the biggest issue is just not getting the trucks in there, and it's all queuing back on Route 22.
Right, right, and that's DOT's concern. So, it'll get a little technical here, but we're, we're using Synchro software, and for the, the analysis, that's what DOT accepted, but we actually used another software called Visum, that is a better software for, for modeling and presentations. Synchro has limitations, so this is a very unique left turn situation. The lefts are situated opposite the normal, typically, classic movement. They typically would conflict, the left in and the left out. They're placed so that they can happen simultaneously. Synchro can't model that properly, so the Synchro will show traffic coming and make a left, and then it actually would turn back out and then leave and make a left. So we used Visum to model this, and we, we sent, we did a recording of the peak hours and that, we sent that to DOT, so that they could watch it, we could, we could also provide that to the planning board. So the Synchro really has limitations, and I, and the operations are going to be better than what, what Synchro provides. The, the Visum is, is really accurate, we feel, so.
So you're not anticipating any problems with vehicles entering the site from the double left?
Correct.
And getting jammed up and, and queuing back onto the highway? You think this is going to, is going to function properly?
Right, so there are two ways that could happen, and I, that's what you were getting at, Paul, the first is if you make the double left in and then you were to hit a red light?
Right.
Which we're not going to have, we're going to have it that coordinated. And then we don't want this double left going out to northbound direction, we don't want that queue to come back and cross the loop road. So that's why I, I was talking about earlier, we're proposing a force-off loop in this area, so it ensures that enough time is given to clear that out, so that we don't block, this, this would go red, right, and then we would give a little more time if we had to, to clear that out, just so we don't want traffic coming in, making a right after they make the double left in, and then a right to the outer loop road. We don't want them to be blocked here. So that's the reason of the force-off. So those two elements of the design should ensure that, wouldn't that happen?
But again, a double left coming in, there's only going to be one truck that will be allowed into the inner loop road?
Wait, let me get up. Double lane out here to turn left, correct?
Correct, right. So, two tractor trailers again, side by side, that happens, comes down this way. Is there room here for both those trucks that went there?
No, no, there's a single lane, that's a through and a left.
So?
So you can only make a left?
Where it gets out on the street, if there's not enough time, they're going to make the double left. What's, what's stopping this guy from making a right and coming in down here? In which case, you're going to jam up.
They, they physically can make this right and come down and make the, the left in, this other access connection between the loop roads.
Okay.
But we are, we would sign the double left to notify trucks where they should be, so in which lane? Chris, was anything else I missed?
Thank you, covered it.
All right, thank you. I'll be sure to have the timings ready, Paul, at this, the planning board.
Thank you. Rory's is going to love that.
All right, that concludes our two witnesses' presentation. We believe we've shown that this plan is consistent with the redevelopment plan adopted by the township. As, as you've seen, we had a few areas of variations from those plans, which we feel we justified, that primarily in the area of buffer, buffering, and James did crunch the numbers, Paul, and the average buffering is 278.5. So we do exceed that 275 with the averaging. And as I said, you know, my client is available if there are additional questions, our financial analyst is available if there are questions, but other than that, we, I think our, our goal tonight was to show consistency, and we believe we have done that. We've shown what the, what the building will look like, we've shown what the site will look like, and its basic features, and some of its details, and particularly focused on the traffic, which I know is one of the bigger concerns.
Let me ask something. The only, there's no entrance, entrances or exits in LoPac, huh?
Yeah, that's correct, because this, this one over onto the north is, is going to be devoted to pedestrians.
Oh, pedestrians?
I'm not kidding.
Cars, cars.
Cars, yeah. Pass it, a key word.
Anybody else? Questions, comments, gentlemen? No? Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, now we just need a motion, if somebody's inclined to make one on council, that they find it to be consist, generally consistent with the redevelopment plan. Or?
A motion that says they find it? The, the LoPac section? We have nothing to say about LoPac, or anything?
Well, no, I think it's the whole, you know, we have a redevelopment plan, but I mean, we're obviously concerned about LoPac.
LoPac, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah. Gentlemen, what's your pleasure? Well, we really have nothing in LoPac, so it meets what we, our development plan, but. Do you make that motion? Yeah. Second? Local call, please.
Councilman McQuade?
Yes.
Councilman Cuniga?
Yes.
Council President Wright?
Yes.
Yes. All right, at this time, I'll take a public comment on agenda items only. John?
Just a question for presentations. My name is John Betts, I'm in Berkeley Gardens, on Route 25. Just, just some comments about what, what, remember, under new business, number two ordinance, the, the first ordinance, and the second ordinance, and the third ordinance. When you get to those, could you please embellish what they're about?
Beth, I think you and I talked about this, does business registry have something new that's required?
Yes.
That we're going to have to do? Okay. All right, okay. Anything else, John?
Not right now, it's, it's already past that.
All right. Anyone else, questions, comments, agenda items only? Donna?
Donna Schneider, 26th Meadowview. Can you explain how blighted properties or attorney-client privilege, can you elaborate on how that is a attorney-client privilege item?
They wanted, they asked me what, what they could do about blighted properties. So, me giving them advice on, well, we can enforce this one, or we can do that, or we can file a suit, is attorney-client.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Anyone else, questions, comments?
Another, can we, since this presentation was a comment, or it was an item, can we comment on agenda item?
Under.
Since this presentation?
Yeah, I'm sure.
We can't ask these gentlemen any questions, correct?
No, because it's not a hearing, it's, you know.
Yeah, I know it's not a hearing, yeah, I, I understand that. Okay, so just my quick comment is, you know, this, putting cars and trucks going in and out of that is a recipe for disaster, together in the same lanes going in, and you're not only going to have chaos over there, but you're going to put those businesses out of business, because the residents here are going to look and see trucks all over the place in there, and no one's going to want to go sit and eat in Chick-fil-A, or Starbucks, or Panera. So it's just going to be a recipe for disaster. Thank you.
Anyone else, questions, comments? Agenda items only, yes, sir?
Can I comment on the presentation? Is that what's in there?
Yeah, sure. These are not questions for them, they can, this is not.
Fine. Your responsibility is to answer them, correct?
No, no, this is public comment, so you can make a comment, or a statement, or do whatever you want, but you ask questions, and they decide they want to answer the questions, I'll answer the question.
All right, that's fine.
David address?
William Simpson, 1125 Monroe Drive. So, I was actually just there to this, tonight, to go to Chick-fil-A, actually, and there's the two left-hand lanes there. If the trucks are coming in on the right-hand lane, and the cars are in the left-hand lane, when a tractor trailer turns, oftentimes that trailer will cut over on the left-hand lane, how are we going to be sure that that's not going to be causing accidents in that area? Because somebody's, if they're not used to driving around with trucks coming in on a lane like that, where they have to leave extra room for the truck, that's going to be a potential hazard. The other question I would have is, in leaving that area, we, for example, with us, we usually leave on the southeastmost exit, there's a blind corner there, so if there are cars exiting out from the direction of Kohl's, you can't see them coming until you actually pull out into the lane. If you have both trucks coming in and going out there, it's going to be very difficult for anyone leaving those restaurants to be able to exit from that exit, which is going to be the primary exit, because especially if there's trucks coming in that main entrance, they're going to want to go out that exit. So these are just concerns that I would have with that. In addition, does the Department of Transportation or this committee take a look at the increased truck traffic that would be also affecting, for example, the Stop &amp; Shop, and Walmart, and other businesses that are between this area and the un-ramp onto 78? Because if there's increased truck, traffic, traffic there, it will also affect all of those businesses. So something to consider, so, yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else, questions, comments, agenda items only? Yes?
Robin George, 34 Raleigh Court. Actually, my comment is about, was about the trees and the green space being left behind by the friendlies. I didn't hear any biodiversity, I heard evergreens, and quite often, evergreens turn out to be ovary days, and they don't really last very well. So, I hope, I would like to encourage the developer, as they look at their trees, to consider the biodiversity of what they're planting, deciduous and evergreens. And with the friendly space, you know, we talk about what can these developments do for the community, and there's a large apartment complex right next door, and if we're taking down a friendlies, it seems like an opportunity for green space to be used as something like a community garden. So encouraging the community to be a part of that, that space, I think, would be a really nice offering to those residents in that, in that apartment building. That was all.
Thank you. Questions, comments, anybody else? Harvey?
I've been walking through 21st South Third. I wish you people would know when to leave the township, although we have enough warehouses and trucks as it is.
Thank you, anyone else? All right, seeing none, we move into old business. Number one is to approve amendments from December 7th and 29th, 2022, executive and regular sessions. Gentlemen, have you seen them all? Any questions, comments? Motion on number one?
Motion.
Councilman McQuade?
Yes.
Councilman Cuniga?
Yes.
Council President Wright?
Yes.
Mayor Manucci?
Yes. Number two is to approve Mayor Manucci to execute the Upper Belvedere Road sidewalk agreement, and tap grant.
I'm recommending, Mayor, that the attach of council approve the agreement and authorize you, and get to sign it tonight. This is one of the final steps before we are given authorization to advertise the project for public bids at this point.
Okay, and that's basically, just so everybody understands, is a sidewalk from the pool entrance all the way down to the pizza shop, essentially?
Correct. And this is a standard agreement, it's provided to any entity that has federal aid funding on, on a project.
Motion?
One last thing, just before you take the motion. I was able to get the town another $117,000 in grant money, so the original grant was $322,000. The department, based on a request I submitted, increased that to $439,000. So that's reflected in this agreement right now.
All right, thank you.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Councilman McQuade?
Yes.
Councilman Cuniga?
Yes.
Council President Wright?
Yes.
Yes, under new business number one is number 2023-01, first reading to establish a cap bank. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Councilman McQuade?
Yes.
Councilman Cuniga?
Yes.
Council President Wright?
Yes.
Yes. Number two is ordinance number 2023-02, first reading to establish Chapter 86 entitled Business Registry, establishing a registry for business rental units and multifamily homeowners insurance certificate. Beth, you want to elaborate on that?
Just that Governor signed into a new law, and he's requiring all commercial businesses, rental units, multifamily, rental units to provide a certificate of insurance, and there'll be a fee for that, and I'll have to be recording that, and it'll be yearly, and it's going to be a huge project.
So more work for you, more revenue for the state.
Well, we're going to get some revenue, if we get it.
Yeah. All right. I'll make that motion on number two.
Councilman McQuade?
Yes.
Councilman Cuniga?
Yes.
Council President Wright?
Yes.
Yes, number three is ordinance number 2023-03, it's the first reading deleting Article 2 of Chapter 165, entitled Residential Maintenance of Properties in Foreclosure and Replacing Same to Be Consistent with PL 2021-C.444.
The state had allowed us previously to charge, when, when a house was in foreclosure, residential property, you could require the bank, or whoever held the mortgage on it, to register with the town, and they had to pay a fee, and then each year, that fee escalated, and the purpose behind the statute and allowing towns to create those ordinances was, you gave the bank an incentive to get that property fixed up and back on the tax roll, back on the market. Because, you know, when, everybody's seeing when the economy goes bad, the number of houses that are being foreclosed on, and they're not taken care of. But the state, in its infinite wisdom, decided to add commercial properties to that as well, which is a great idea, but they've made it more confusing, and they've lowered the fees. And the problem was, you really didn't have a choice, because the state said, if you didn't adopt this ordinance, then you couldn't enforce your, your old ordinance is now unenforceable. So, I think the intention was good, but the end result is not so good. But we have to have this in order to be able to charge the fee for residential and commercial properties now.
All right. Motion on number three?
Motion. Second.
Councilman McQuade?
Yes.
Councilman Cuniga?
Yes.
Council President Wright?
Yes.
Yes, number four is ordinance number 2023-04, it's the first reading, amending and supplementing Chapter 243-87, entitled Powers and Duties of Zoning Officer to Increase the Fees for zoning permits issued by the zoning officer. A motion?
Motion.
I'll second it.
Councilman McQuade?
Yes.
Councilman Cuniga?
Yes.
Council President Wright?
Yes.
Gentlemen, the consent agenda one through eight, anybody have anything in there they want removed? Hearing and seeing none, I'll make the motion for the consent agenda.
Second.
Councilman McQuade?
Yeah.
Councilman Cuniga?
Yes.
Council President Wright?
Yes.
Yes, council reports, Mr. McQuade?
I don't have any.
All right, thank you. Mr. Cuniga?
No report this evening, thank you.
Mr. Wright, you going to elaborate on the pool?
Yeah, we're, uh, park. Except the park, yeah, park, I think. Working with Paul and John Mooney, our accountants, I think we're ready to move ahead, was our whole plan, next meeting, we're going to invite Mr. Mooney in to speak with us and talk about our financing and how we're going to move ahead, but we plan on next month, bringing it out and moving to the next step to get the whole park done, in one shot.
All right, we can afford it.
All right, we can, we'll see.
All right, that's it?
That's it.
Paul?
You think, Mayor, is wanting to report to the council that the Baltimore Street plans have been submitted to the Department of Transportation, hoping to have their approval, which will allow us to go out to bid in the next few weeks on that particular project. And I am meeting with Kim next week on the tent to go over all the capital projects, and come up with a game plan from a funding perspective. We have other road projects, including Bellevue Road, which received a DOT grant several months ago, as well as another section of Stonehenge Drive. So we're going to get our arms around that and come up with a funding plan to, to get all this work done.
Very good. Very good. Anything else?
Uh, no, Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, chief, anything other than your report?
Nothing more, sir.
Nothing we need to be vigilant on or anything?
Uh, just, uh, just being in the room in, uh, in all respects of the town.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, need a motion to approve department reports?
Motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
All right.
Proven payment of bills? I'll make that motion.
Second.
Councilman McQuade?
Yes.
Councilman Pledo?
Yes.
Council President Wright?
Yes.
Yes. Folks, you're up. Donna?
The zoning permits, is that, are, are those the resident permits that you're increasing costs on?
It's resident and commercial.
It's both. Okay, so, all right, thank you. When the, when these guys came in 2020, they were at the Cubes in 2020?
I don't forget his name back then, did it?
I'll be honest with you, I don't even recall him being here in 2020. There was, there was an outfit here in March of 2020? They were here one meeting and left.
They were here in October of 2020.
That's what they said, I don't, I don't recall it.
It's on there.
Is it?
Yeah. Yeah, and it's in the minutes, and it's, and it also says, October 2020, you were already talking about redevelopment plans for the Fieldsburg Mall. And that was passed as well that night, so, um, I guess it's been going on for quite a bit.
This is the first time they came back to us.
Yeah, but they were, they were here prior, so, um, yeah. What else do I have here? I just, I, this step, by you approving that, they're gonna go to the planning board, correct? So the planning board is gonna look at everything, and they're going to pass this through, and we're going to have these guys at the Fieldsburg Mall. And this is what's going to be.
We don't know that at this point?
Well, everything seems to get passed at the, at the planning board, so.
Talking to the Lopath section.
Yeah, I know, but we, they wouldn't be here if we didn't say yes to it, so, um, if we didn't make the mall a redevelopment property and only put warehouses in our redevelopment plan, they would not be here. So it's really just sad and disappointing that our redevelopment plan only included warehouses, as I stated before, and not anything else. Warehouses and office space instead of something other than warehouses, because we've got them all over, and there's trucks everywhere. There's trucks everywhere. They're parked everywhere. It's just terrible. And we're gonna add another, God knows how many more, plus this 50-foot building. So disappointing.
Done?
Just a comment about, about the Fieldsburg Mall area?
Yes.
Fieldsburg Mall area, uh, coming out of it, um, onto 22, turning left, uh, north of, north of the mall, on the westbound lane of 22. It was mentioned briefly about that left-hand turn there. When the planning board starts to deal with that, I think somebody should, should look into that, the left-hand turn. You know, coming out.
Coming out, heading towards.
Turning left, because that does, all of those things, as I've said, other warehouse situations, it does lead truck traffic up over the, over the Pay Bridge and into Pennsylvania and up to Route 33, to go either, maybe, if it's shorter, to go to 20, uh, 78 that way, or if it's to the right, up to the Poconos, or down from the Poconos and coming in, yeah, from the other direction, so. And then there's a lot of, this, I've been experiencing the sights of trucks in left lanes, going into right lanes, like they have to do it really quickly, like go over at, uh, up by the mall, up on, up by Walmart. If they go to that one gas station on the, on the westbound side of 22, uh, right after, uh, um, you know, you get off of 22, they come out of that gas station and cut, try to cut across and cut across those lanes to go into the Walmart. Walmart parking lot, so it's quite a bit of, uh, that kind of truck traffic going on, cutting from the right lane all the way over to the left lane, blocking all three lanes in a very short section of time. That's, that could happen anywhere along that stretch. Even, you know, the warehouses over here in the Paccon by T. S. All and that type of stuff, all right? Mr. Laborie, is there any further thing you can say about the rent control ordinances or anything that? Uh, we sent a letter, they called, they have not responded in writing, so I am going to follow up with a regular and certified mail letter. So, and I understand that we have a copy to lease now, so we're gonna compare that. Okay. And see what, but they've been put on notice, whether that does any good at this point? Yes, yes. All right, now, the other thing I want to tell you is, in the leases that, in the, in the beginning of the year, that were first done for January, there was, um, on, on some of them, there was sewer and water, sewer and water charges were added. There was, they were checked off, but on some leases now, as we go into March, the March-April area, that part of lease is not, is not checked. So I just wanna make. Yeah, and we've talked about this before, they're not allowed to charge that because they can't exceed that, their cap. I know they're trying to. Yes. But they can't, so, um, we will make sure that that does not. Okay, and I did speak to your, to your attorney at the rental board meeting. All right, great, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? John?
John Ketcherson, 38 J Lane. So as you know, we've been coming to these meetings for over a year now, and been asking about the Peaberg Mall property and redevelopment plans and everything. And when we came to this council earlier in the year, um, and we said, you know, the Pohakcon councils meeting, meeting minutes, stated that the Cubes was the name of the warehouse development. Jim, you looked at us with a puzzled look and said, it was the Cubes, and Bill, you stated, a warehouse can't be built on a mall property.
Yeah, keep saying that, but you know, that was never said, so show me your minutes for us.
Okay, can I just please make?
Show me one minute.
I'll, I'll give you the quotes here, and then, you know, I'll sit down with you and we can go over the entire, all the videos, okay? You said it multiple times. And I just can't tell you how incredibly disheartening it is to have been lied to for over a year by the people that have been elected to represent us. I guess it wasn't just something we read on social media, like you claimed on July 6th, right, Bill? Whatever happened to all those claims, your persistent claims that a warehouse can't be built on a Lopakcon side of the mall property and Pohakcon can do whatever they want? You insisted that the Lopakcon will perhaps get a parking lot or a piece of grass, making these false claims on April 6th, July 6th, and August 22nd, so there's your dates, you can go and see what you said.
I said, if we don't do it, we're gonna get a mall, we're gonna get a parking lot or a piece of grass. I said that a hundred times.
Can I please make my statement?
Yeah.
Thank you. Jim, you said on November, on the November 2022 council meeting, when somebody asked, how many more warehouses are planned for, uh, for Lopakcon? You said one. The, the warehouse on Strikers Road, yet you forgot about these two more, which total 1.4 million square feet. Your attorney is just as culpable, because she was asked during the April 6th meeting, in light of this being a property in need of redevelopment, would a warehouse be built there if the plans were submitted? And she said, there's an ordinance in place that says no warehouse. And when it was again made clear that she was being asked, in light of this being a property in need of redevelopment, she doubled down on this. And that, Bill, is when you first claimed that we'll get a parking lot or a piece of grass. Well, that diagram, that there was tonight, was not a parking lot or a piece of grass. So lies breed lies. So if you're thinking of going down the road that your attorney tried did, when she alluded that the, if a Hackon builds a warehouse, we consider, we have to consider loss of tax revenue if we don't file suit, let me point this out. Building any warehouse on the mall property or filled behind it requires the cooperation of both towns, both Lopakcon and Pohakcon. Without one, you can't have the other. The Cubes is more than 50% in Lopakcon, we heard that tonight. And the one Perucci wants to put on the front line behind it is 80% in Lopakcon. Without Lopakcon's cooperation, the Cubes would be probably too small to be viable, and Perucci's warehouse would be impossible. So getting on to another pact, um, I can see Belvedere Ave from the back of my house. This is the section that's, uh, weight restricted, and 18-wheelers are not supposed to be on there. Every day, there's multiple 18-wheelers driving this section of Belvedere, every day. Since the mayor and council feel it's okay to add another 1.4 million square feet of warehouse space to the township, when will the town stop enforcing, start enforcing the rules of the roads for these trucks? Mayor, at the June 15th special council meeting, you stated, and I quote, "Belvedere Ave is a disaster because of the trucks using the road that they shouldn't." And you stated that trucks take this route to avoid the lights on the designated truck route. You also stated, when the trucks are pulled over, that it's nearly impossible to determine who actually owns them. Strange that when your truck people complain about the truck issues, you and other council members all claim that you don't see this. But when, uh, when somebody, you know, you, you admit this when none of your truck people are in attendance. But my question is, why? Knowing that the issues, knowing about the issues associated with these trucks, whether you admit to them or not, why are you bringing in more warehouses, especially for a property not zoned for warehousing, and one that could have been developed into anything that you wanted to, but you chose warehouses? The subject of garbage has been brought up to this council in the past, multiple times. At the last council meeting, the council stated, garbage isn't really from the truckers and that people are pigs. In the past, I provided pictures of pee bottles, empty containers of death, and at the last council meeting, it was pointed out at least three times that the pee bottles are from truckers. Is this really what the people you were elected to represent deserve? So what's the status of the illegally operating truck stop on the Twilight Lot? Your zoning officer stated on January 17th, he was going to revisit Twilight and reissue summonses on the following Tuesday. Did that ever occur?
I do not know whether they were occurring or not. Do you have any insight on that at all, Beth? I know it was out there.
This is for the Twilight?
Twilight.
Yeah, I mean, they were, they were being upheld, you know, in court, you know, the violation, so.
Okay. I did.
So there's two lots that we're talking about. That's the Twilight lot. We're also told that the Peaberg Heavy Duty Truck Repair Lot was issued a $250 fine, which, after operating a illegal truck stop for, for over a year, 200. Well, I, I got interrupted multiple times, and I just have just a couple sentences here. So, uh, and that they had to remove the trucks by April. So what happens if they don't do so?
We'll probably have to reissue more fines as far as I'm concerned. I don't know.
$250 fines?
I don't know if there's an appeal process, John. I don't know if there's an appeal process. And they may be appealing, I don't know. I've heard nothing on that at this point. Judge gave 90 days stacked on it, so.
I, I, I'll be honest with you, just in closing, and I'll just take another second, I just don't get you guys. I've been asking, time after time after time, Jim, you know it, Bill, you know it, even though you're sitting there denying it, and you.
You take words and you change them around.
I didn't change.
You, all of them fall, all these other people, you change things around, you play games.
Here's the quotes, you want them? I'm not playing games, Bill.
I know, you're good.
Why don't we sit down in the office one day, and we'll look at the, the videos, and we'll point out exactly what you're saying, a warehouse can't be built on a mall property.
Thanks, Jim.
You're a liar.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Bob Bruce, 11 Harwich Road. I just basically want to address Mr. Lowry.
It's Laborie.
Laborie, okay, I'm sorry, sir.
It's all right.
Your profession, as all, all you gentlemen up here, and your representatives are about. I'm just a resident, man. I don't understand these rules, right? Ask your simple question, sir.
And I answered your question, and I answered your question five times.
If she wa, if she had the meaning, she can read it back. Your answer to me, I repeat it at that point, so the answer is no.
And I said, correct.
And then you saw, and then you started going down rabbit holes that basically served to confuse.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry if I confused you. You know, I'm sorry if I confused you, but you know what? I try to treat everybody with respect. There's people in the audience that may disagree with what the council's doing, they may disagree with me, that's fine. I treat them with respect, and I expect respect in return.
Okay.
When you start yelling at me because you don't like the answer that you got, I don't know.
It wasn't because I didn't like the answer, sir.
Well, apparently it was, because I gave you the same answer five straight times, and all you did was keep raising your voice. So I try, I treated you with respect. Every time you've been here before, I've treated other people with respect, but I'm not gonna have you yell at me from the audience when I've answered your question. If you don't like the answer, I'm sorry, but that's the answer. And I told, said the same thing five times.
Now is, as I had asked, do we get the question in tonight? And now my answer is, they're gonna come back and they're gonna present testimony, so we'll be able to question them at that time?
Right, at the planning board, exactly, which is what I said.
Okay, yeah, at the end of it, yeah, but I was ready to drop the whole thing when I, I said, so the answer is no. Well, indeed, that was, yes, the answer is no, you don't get the question tonight. Simple.
Anyone else? Questions, comments? Hearing, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. All in favor? Folks, thanks for coming out.